I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and salute to the flag. This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Barakis?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
Dr. Osman? Mr. Palmieri?
Present.
Mr. Sargent? Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Walsh?
I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
So we're up to 5.1 on the agenda. This is a hearing on Ms. Permili's new employment contract, but before we open it up to public forum, the acting board president this evening had a statement that she would like to read.
I'm very pleased to report to the Jackson School District community that the Board of Education and Ms. Permili have come to terms on a new five-year employment contract for Ms. Permili. The Board approached Ms. Permili in regards to opening her contract and offering her a new contract that will allow this district consistency of leadership. Ms. Permili is an outstanding superintendent who has achieved great things for our district. In fact, Jackson has been recognized by the New Jersey Department of Education through its CUSAC monitoring process as a highly performing district. This is something that everyone in Jackson should be very proud of. Ms. Permili has been a strong advocate for funding for Jackson schools and demonstrates the leadership qualities this district needs for it to continue to be a strong school system. In order to retain our valued and respected superintendent, we decided with Ms. Permili in agreement to rescind her current contract, which was not set to expire until 2025, and enter into a new five-year contract, which will expire in 2027, instead. The Board will be voting shortly on that new contract, which has already been approved by the Executive County Superintendent of Schools as fully compliant with applicable statutes and regulations. The law requires that we have a public hearing on the contract before the Board votes on it. This simply means that the public is able to provide its input on the contract, which has been posted with the agenda. We're going to rescind Ms. Permili's current contract and replace it with a new five-year contract for the term commencing retroactively to July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025. In conclusion, we believe that this contract is a win-win for the Board and Ms. Permili. The Board retains a very valued and highly respected superintendent who has achieved great things for our district. Mrs. Permili is paid fairly and competitively as compared to her superintendent colleagues in the county of similarly sized districts. We are pleased with this agreement and delighted that Ms. Permili has committed to stay with us for at least five more years. I will now open the floor to public comment on this new contract.
And I just wanted to mention, there was a typo in there, which is my fault. It should say it was '22 through '27, not '22 through '25. So now we're going to open it up to public comment solely on Ms. Permili's contract.
Excuse me, Mr. Siderver. Does he need to be first and a second for this?
You want to open it up, but you need a motion to open it up? Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Do all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Gus Hassevato, 18, Brian Drive, Jackson. Every good professional has a right to wish to excel and to rise above whatever level they're at that time if they think they're worth. I will say this about Ms. Permili. She is not only worth it, she's an investment in the district. You will find people who will look at her salary and say, "This is too much," because it's a high salary. It's not as high as some, but you have to defend that by saying, "If we want the best, we must be fair to them financially." Also, I applaud that you are willing to keep her, because there's a lot of growth, a lot of future in this young woman, and it's going to benefit our district. She's well worth the investment of the money you're offering her. Thank you.
Any other public comment? I need a motion to close public comment.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
We're not to the motion yet. We're just closing it, so all in favor of closing?
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, somebody, if they'd be kind enough to make a motion to move item 5.2, which is the vote on the actual contract itself.
So I need a motion for approval of the superintendent contract.
Somebody needs to move it first.
Yes.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Thank you. I would just like to say, Ms. Permili assumed the role of superintendent in February of 2020. A month later, COVID swept the nation and the world. It caused two years of school closures and government mandates. This is really the first year of normalcy and should be a fresh start for Ms. Permili and the district. And not only is that why I support this renewed contract, but because I believe we have the best superintendent in the state of New Jersey and one who cares for every student. And this decision is a win for our district.
Any other discussions? Roll call.
Mrs. Barakis? Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I now turn the meeting over to Ms. Permili for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Rivera, and thank you to everyone for your kind words, to the Board for your confidence and support. I am really looking forward to my continued work here in the district with the amazing staff that I work with. Obviously, you don't do things alone, and I have an incredible staff around me who are extremely talented. This is a special place to be, and thank you for just acknowledging that, and you know that I'm in this for the benefit of all students. Thank you for acknowledging that. In education, because I want to make a positive impact on students' lives, and thank you again for your confidence, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody into the future. We're going to do wonderful things together, so thank you. So now to my superintendent's report. As we always do, we will start with our high school student board representatives tonight, and we'll start tonight with Liberty with Jordan Boyer, who will explain lots of things, good happenings happening there at Liberty.
Good evening, Superintendent Permili, Board of Education members and guests. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight as a way to share some of the exciting news that Liberty has been up to over the past month. Our clubs have been very busy this past month. The Student Council hosted another successful homecoming dance, and with the help of the PTSN, gave the students a night to remember. The classes did not rest after BOTC and started hosting their own fundraiser, like the class of 2025's signing to donate. The Key Club also ran a Treats for Troops fundraiser that brought in 50 pounds of donations. The National Honor Society had a beautiful induction ceremony, where they not only welcomed incoming members, but also paid a tribute to Guidance Counselor Dawn Segal for all of her contributions to students over the years. NHS did not stop there and are currently running a fundraiser of gobblegrims to help bring cheer to others while gaining support for their organization. Liberty is also hosting a pet drive just in time for the holidays to benefit the Associated Humane Society. The band organized a clothing drive to help support those in need. When they are helping the community, they are winning titles for it. We are so proud to announce that JLHS Band is once again regional and state champions. Every year, their show is impressive, and we are so happy that the judges like this routine as much as we did. Other titles to be excited about are the Boys Cross Country Team winning the Fall Classic Invitationals and the Boys Soccer being named B-South Champs. On top of that, our football team had a dominant win over Lakewood in their last game, defeating them 47-20. And girls volleyball advanced to the sectional finals and ultimately placed second in their South Jersey Group Two section. It was a great fall season, but now our focus shifts to winter sports, which they start their trials next week. As much as we are enjoying our time in high school, Liberty is making sure that their students are given the opportunity to succeed beyond graduation. One of the ways they are doing this is by hosting visits from armed forces and college recruiters to help guide the students to find the best fit for them. Most recently, we even collaborated with Rider University to have an instant decision day. It was a great experience where students were awarded acceptance and even some scholarships to such a well-respected and local university. Additionally, athletics hosted a signing day for our athletes, who have earned the privilege of continuing their careers in college to autograph their national letters of intent. Congratulations to all who have achieved this remarkable feat. The production crews have been busy onstage at JLHS. The Drama Club did an amazing job with their performance of Charlotte's Web and are already looking ahead to casting for their spring musical, Legally Blonde. JTV started rehearsals for their Christmas show home for the holidays. The theme of the show is Polar Express, and all are encouraged to wear their holiday pajamas to help get into the spirit. The show is scheduled for 6:30 PM on December 1st. We hope to see you there. Although fall is coming to an end and the cold weather is coming, you can see there's plenty going on to heat up Liberty. Thank you for giving me this amazing platform to share with you a little insight of life into Liberty and your much appreciated time. Have a great rest of your week. See you next month.
Thank you very much, Jordan. Lots of things happening there at Liberty. Thank you for sharing. And from Memorial, we have Keith Adame here, ready to share all the happenings here at Memorial.
Good evening, Mrs. Permili, members of the Central Administration Staff and Board members. Thank you for having me back to address you all once again regarding this month at Jackson Memorial High School. Another fantastic and eventful month. Beginning with the NHS induction ceremony, which took place on November 7th, and once again proved to be a major success. Joyous occasion celebrating the induction of around 80 new members who had met its rigorous academic... academic standards. This year, we were able to bring back desserts and treats coupled with the large National Honor Society cake that the members and parents were able to enjoy during a post-reception ceremony. The event also announced our honorary Teacher of the Year, AP Chemistry Teacher, Mrs. Oak, news that I can say was very well received, especially by my fellow STEM Academy members. With all this being said, I would like to give a big thank you to Ms. Bunce for her continued support with our National Honor Society. And speaking of NHS, adoptive families up and running, and members are back at it again, doing all that they can to help the less fortunate. And not only is it our National Honor Society, but our DECA, Key Club, FBLA, and Student Council are also looking forward to being active in the community this year as the holidays roll around with their annual toy drives, community service events, charity fundraisers, and various donations sponsored by none other than the student body here at JMHS. Regarding our Student Council, we were able to have our joint luncheon with our fellow Liberty student representatives, along with Mrs. Permili, where we were able to discuss many important issues and ideas together over sandwiches and snacks. And I can say I'm looking forward to the next one. The month of November began as well with an exciting event, as on November 2nd, we had our Broadway Night showcasing the musical talents of our student body through the singing of songs from various Broadway musicals. And speaking of musicals, with November finishing up, be sure to save the date for Scrooge, which will be showing December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. I would also like to recognize our AP students working hard in preparation for our tests coming up in the spring, especially those of which are seniors navigating through the mess of the college application process. In which, I would like to give a big thanks to the Guidance Department for hosting their Workshop Wednesdays during Common Lunch to help many of us apply to colleges. And in recognizing our AP students, I would also like to give a big congratulations to our Seniors of the Month, Tyler DeMonico and Megan Anderson for the month of October, and our recently announced Seniors of the Month of November, Michael Cipriano and Camille Maxalite. As sports come to an end, I would like to acknowledge all of our teams, along with our football team, who had an impressive run making it through the first round of playoffs. Each player giving nothing but their best performance this season. And speaking of football, our Powderpuff Event was also a huge success. Our senior and junior class were able to raise a great deal in earnings from attendance alone, and our underclassmen able to earn a significant amount selling snacks and hot chocolate, which I can say was a pretty smart idea, as I myself ended up buying about five of those hot chocolates that night. The event, in true Memorial fashion, was enjoyable for all who watched and participated, showcasing the athleticism and skill of our female players in a high-scoring game with memorable moments, and our male cheerleaders impressing us with their flips, tricks, and push-ups, all while wearing skirts in the freezing cold weather. Heading into winter, I can personally say that our boys' basketball team is looking forward to bringing about an exciting season, along with our girls' basketball team and our wrestling team, who are also expected to be quite impressive this year. With all that said and done, I would like to finish off by once again thanking Mrs. Permili and the Board of Education for your continued support and for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I look forward to addressing you all next month with some more exciting news regarding the events here at Jackson Memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you to both of you, Keith and Jordan. I know you have very busy schedules, but we really do appreciate you coming once a month to give us an update of all of the wonderful things happening at your, your high schools. In the same spirit, there is lots of things happening across the district. It's hard to believe it's mid-November, next week is Thanksgiving, the time has been going super fast, I feel. Lots of things happening here in the district. The both high school reps made reference to our athletic teams. Our sports teams have had a successful fall season. It's excellent to see all of our students participating. A special thank you to our coaches for all their hard work throughout the season with the students. This week, we have parent-teacher conferences, and we know how important those are. It's important that parents and teachers work together for the progress of their students so that they grow and learn. That's been happening this week. I've had the privilege of attending the Charlotte's Web play at Liberty last week. Phenomenal, phenomenal. We just put on excellent shows here across the district, so much that I was so absorbed in the show, the play was over. Did you ever have that moment where you just don't want it to end? That's how I was at, oh, I don't want it to end, it's so good. It was fabulous. So congratulations to that full cast and the staff involved in helping those students. I also did participate in both National Honor Society inductions. They were beautiful ceremonies, and congratulations to all those students and families. Hard work, perseverance, work ethic is all involved in that, and they are excellent role models for their peers. So congratulations to all of them. The ceremonies were gorgeous, and again, thank you to the staff that helped coordinate those. As Keith made mention to, I did attend Student Council meetings, both high schools combined. We met here, we had lunch, we chatted, we talked about the things that they were preparing to do with their, their peers in school. We talked about other things that they were hoping to do when we talked about the two high schools doing an event together. I also was fortunate last week to meet with our middle school student councils, again, combined student councils, and we had those same conversations. And we also talked about what, what they love about school and what are the things that they would like to see improved upon in school. And for some reason, lunches always come up. So, but it's, it's good, all is good. It was wonderful. The high, the middle school students are also planning to do a combined event together, and actually also talking about reaching out to the high school student councils and doing an event that would involve all four schools. So that was very exciting. So looking forward to hear what they come up with, that the next time we meet, they're going to have some ideas and plans for me. So that was a wonderful opportunity to get to meet with our students. I wanted to just also mention, we had Veterans Day, not to, you know, let this week or last week, rather, and in honor, we, there were lots of activities that happened throughout the district, but I just wanted to mention one that I thought was, you know, just one that was important to point out. Over at McAuliffe, they brought veterans in and had a buffet breakfast with the vets, and then those vets visited classrooms and met with students and shared their military experience with the students. It was an incredible learning environment and experience for, for students. And like I said, we do lots of activities across the district, but that one was very powerful to hear right from the vets. Wanted to mention tonight also, there is an upcoming webinar on mental health basics for high school parents as part of our high school family engagement webinar series. It is held virtually in the hopes that we could get more people to participate. The next one is November 30th from 6:00 to 7:00, and you can go to our website to learn more about how to log into that session. They're wonderful sessions, great opportunity, and being virtual, you can just plug right in quickly, no matter where you are. So with that, again, as I started with, I can't believe next week is Thanksgiving. I do wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving, and we will see you in December, and that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Permili. State and County Board Rep, the next meeting will be December 12th at the Brick Developmental Center at 6:30. Parent Group Liaison, next meeting January 11, 2023, and Special Education.
Regarding Special Education, the Special Education Advisory Council is holding a workshop on December 7th from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock, and they will have a presenter there to discuss meeting the emotional and behavioral needs of children. If people do want to join, you do have to register for this workshop, so you could call 732-833-4700, extension 7038 to register.
Thank you. There are no other standing committee reports. The Board will reconvene the commit, these committees after reorganization in January. Policies and regulations. I need a motion for approval of policies, second reading.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes of the official Board meeting, October 19th, 2022, closed session meeting, and the official Board meeting, October 19th, 2022, Committee of the Whole Business Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Miss, Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the Treasurers and Board Secretaries' reports.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond? I'm sorry, Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to open the public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during the meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you're a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard.
Gus Saseveto, eighteen, Brian Drive Jackson. It was, it was good to see the two student board members sitting together and chatting before the meeting. We got the idea for the school board, student school board member by stealing, by visiting a Tom Silver School meeting. They had one, the next month, we had one too. The one thing I would like to, through the president, speak to the two board members. It is a serious position because you are, you have the, your head inside the room. You get to see here, a lot of things that students don't get to see or hear, but also you're in the school district, and you get to know things that you know you know, and you don't tell people you know because that's what teenagers do. However, I would like for you to try this. Continue meeting before the meeting. They talk to your high school principal, share what Liberty and high school have in common or have different. Because you're not individual representatives of the school district, you're a team representing the, the school district. And what you, what you can do is help us as students make things better. One of the things that can be better is the way people treat each other. We have a problem nationally and internationally about antisemitism. If you know what that is, do something about it. If you don't know what that is, find out about it. Because you can help with the mood of the school, the spirit of the school, and the behavior of students by making sure that Liberty and Memorial respect each other, each individual, each group, whether they be Latino, Asian, male, female, or whatever. It's very important. That's, that's on your shoulders as students. You can't wait till you graduate to say, I should have done that. You can do that now. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you very much.
Are there any additional agenda-only questions? Seeing no one else come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion to move Finance.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move Facilities.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move Programs.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
We have two additional student resolutions. They're identical except for the reference number, so Resolution Number 20 will read, "Resolved that the Board of Education affirms the finding of HIB in case number 235676 JMH 1007 2022, heard during this evening's executive session, and be it further resolved that the parent shall be provided with a written decision and information on their right of appeal." Resolution Number 21 will be identical to that. The resolution will have a reference number of 234445 CGS 0916 2022. And that'll be Resolution 21.
I need a motion to move Students.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move Personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Baracus?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond? Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on any topics pertaining to the Board of Education.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you're a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard.
Gus Saseveto, eighteen, Brian Drive Jackson. Just for, for, because it makes you feel good, I just want to let Ms. Permili know that I had the opportunity to hire seven superintendents that were, superintendents in the school district. You're by far right there at the top of all of them, the best. Now, this four minutes I have left, I want to bring up something that I think will come up. It's coming up nationally, and it's going to come up in this school district. It's, there's a certain group of parents who never show up, but have the right to be the defenders of their kids, their children, representatives. However, I would like for them to show up more often. I would like for more teachers to show up, but I would like to, for us as a board, our citizens, residents, through the superintendent, to defend our books, our library. There are people who are trying to tell us what books to read, what books not to read. When my, my brother, my son went to Germany, as I went to Germany, I made sure he saw the Spottin Berlin with the Nazis burned books. The first thing you do is you remove books, then you feel it's okay to burn books. I have in my hand two books that are banned in a lot of schools. One of them is Uncle Tom's Cabin, first edition, beautiful book. And the second one, we can read for history, we can't teach people what it is for the sake of teaching their religion, the Torah, the books of Moses. There are people who find these books worthy of removal from school districts. And I want the board to be very adamant, very strong when it comes, when the issue comes up, that some clown comes here and says, you got to remove this book. It's okay to edit. I have a 2,000-book library in my own home, many first editions, but what happens is you can edit, you can remove, because it's not essential, it's, you have to discard, but because somebody tells you that it doesn't fit their philosophy, their philosophy, that's a dangerous stage to be in, okay? It's a dangerous stage to be in. Our attorney will nod yes, because that's true. If you didn't have the things, if you didn't have the books I didn't like in the library, there'd be a lot of books you wouldn't have. And if you had the books I like, a lot of those books you wouldn't have because you wouldn't like them. Please, it's a serious issue. Book banning is the beginning of the corrosion of any district, any, any organization, any kind of, you know, mindset. Do not go there. Protect your libraries, protect your books. Thank you very much.
Are there any additional questions? Seeing no one else come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Board comments. Ms. Cass?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and of course, our student representatives. So happy you guys are here. And other than that, I just congratulate all of the sports teams and everything that's going on great in the schools, and I'm sure all of the students and everyone is looking forward to a break next week. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Have a safe and happy and healthy holiday.
With Veterans Day that just had passed, I'd like to take a moment and thank all of our veterans and our active-duty military and their families, not just on Veterans Day, but every day, because it is your sacrifice that you make every day that continues to keep this country the greatest country in the world and free. So thank you. And then for everyone else, I'd like to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving with family and friends. Enjoy the holiday.
Ms. Baracus?
First of all, I want to thank everyone who came out on Election Day. I am looking forward to serving our children, our educators, and our
I am looking forward to serving our children, our educators, and our community for the next three years. So thank you. I also want to wish everyone a happy and healthy Thanksgiving, and thank you for those that are watching at home, and thank you for everyone that came out tonight.
Dr. Osman? I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out today, and I wanted to say congratulations to Ally. We're glad she'll be with us a little bit longer. And to Mrs. Permili, congratulations. I am glad you are sticking it out with us. I think that, you know, you really got your superintendency right during COVID, and I feel like you really have a lot more to give this district, and we're just starting to see that now that things are going back to normal. So I'm very excited that you'll be here at least for, you'll be here till my kids all graduate, and I'm very happy about that. So congratulations.
I want to thank everyone for coming out and attending by livestream, for your comments, and, and also along with the student representatives. I want to congratulate Ms. Permili on your well-deserved contract. And congratulations, Ms. Baracus, on your position. Everyone, have a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving and evening. A motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.